Regular city council meeting for this time of year. If you would like to participate in council, invite me to rise for our invocation following the meeting. Senior Councilman, Councilman Wilson, would you provide our invocation scene?
Lord, Father, we thank you for one more day of your ministry. Most of all, heaven and father, we thank you for allowing your study of his life that we may have life one day of next with you. We thank you for where you brought us from, Lord, because most of us that grew up here in this city know what it was for the time we started as children. If we don't, we move in and we see our week yet alone. This is a place that I love and I honor, and I thank you for bringing me to be, grew up here. And I thank you for allowing this council for me to be a part of it. I thank you, Lord, for everything, and I ask you to bless all mankind and continue to witness this city as best as ever in your name.
I pledge allegiance to the citizens of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with every team's justice and law.
At this time of year, entertain a motion for approval of the, excuse me, entertain a motion to waive the reading of the amendment to July the 9th, 2019, regular city council meeting. May we discuss, and if the city manager says no, I advise you to have it. On the agenda, Mr. Barinow is here, also known as Mr. M.A.S.C. Barinow.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Charlie Barinow, Field Services Manager within the Municipal Association. I'm excited to be here with you tonight. Back on July the 20th, council member Braddock accepted the award in Greendale, but we wanted to be here tonight. We use to fully present the chief of award for cities five to 10,000 to you tonight. So I think we're going to kick it off for the Neptune Park, Iron Park, kick it off with the video and watch that one quickly.
Population category 5,001 to 10,000, the city of Hartsville, with countless wheels of delight.
Oh, it's city Wi-Fi kicking in.
It's easy to embrace the public refuge of a splash pad after experiencing an enthusiastic response to its existing splash pad. The city of Hartsville looked to provide more opportunity for local summertime entertainment. City leaders saw their eyes when expanding the city's other recreation complex. While people from the outside it didn't seem unique to do a water park project, there is this vision that we will bring this into a tourism destination, a regional tourism destination, as well as having something recreational for our residents. The city funded the project with combined system improvement program bonds, in which the city's utility system and water park were combined into a single enterprise fund, the first of its kind in South Carolina. The city also used the capital lease for one-time opening capital expenditures and withheld the project fund to be used over the first three years of operations to continue to expand and improve the water park. The city fulfilled its ambition in 2018 with the opening of Neptune Island Water Park. The scope of Neptune Island Water Park is unusual for a rural community without direct interstate highway access. City leaders focused on broadening Hartsville's reputation as an attractive place to live and created a regional tourism destination. The attraction has slides, a wave pool, and lazy river, and can accommodate 1,300 visitors. The water park was operated for families of all ages and size to get together and do recreational activities together. Previously, the splash pad was for families of smaller age and children. They wanted a place that families and children of all ages could interact together. But not only families, but young professionals and family, we have our golden age generation for our water park. So we want something that everyone can enjoy. Neptune Island marks a major milestone in the development of the 93-acre Firely Park Recreation Complex, which also welcomes families from around the nation every year for various baseball and softball tournaments. Neptune Island Water Park opened in June 2018 and brought in 64,000 visitors from 25 states and eight countries during the season, which was short by construction time. City staff has set a goal of 80,000 visitors for the festival season in 2019. Further expansions to the water park are already planned with the additions based on feedback from Hartsville's residents and partners.
Again, committing for your bold vision, that is an incredible project. Natalie just told me that you had eight thousand visitors this year. So again, we commend you for all that you're doing at Hartsville. If you'd like to come forward, we can take photos presenting the award.
Charlie, obviously he's going to accept it because he's the only one wearing it soon. Why don't we come back here? We're going to do it. We're just wasting time. I didn't bring my band to sit around.
Congratulations.
Can we get a picture of Natalie holding the trophy, one of y'all? Like this? Russ, Russ, you'd want to get in?
We'll do that on the seat. So there is getting, we did it 8,425, there we go, yesterday.
Yeah.
And then the mayor set a goal of 90,000, so I'm not really sure.
90,001.
If we can get that accomplished, but we'll try.
One of the last three?
We hit 90,000. How many times do you want to go this week?
We've got a lot.
I heard it was small today.
Yeah, they're really big crowd today. We've been, the big difference this season is during the week, we're seeing people. We've been remaining consistent, but during the week, that's the big change. We hit our first dinner Saturday a week ago when we got over 2,600 people.
I wanted to tell Jordan, my favorite, you know, part is driving by, because you know, we do that a lot here for not going in and seeing the buses.
So, because it was one day, it was insane.
When you see the buses, you know that's people coming from.
That's right. I think we had probably, well, buses that day for Daniel and Melanie, they were following them during the week. So that our big goal in the offseason is how we build it even better for groups to build some capacity to go out.
I saw my brother-in-law's sister, Fedge, and I said, what are you doing here? She said, I'm here for a birthday. She lives in Colombia. She said, I'm here for a birthday party. And they were all Colombian people. Oh, it's like, that's so cool.
Colombia's definitely a big, a big strong person right now in Colombia.
Billboard's a real place, and all that, every time that y'all have done, it's just in this first place.
Everybody thinks the billboard outside of Colombia is Mary Claire McCandless. I get more phone calls like, are those your girls? And I'm like, no, those are my kids. You're like, God, they look just like them. Was that her in the video? How did she get there? Dropped her off one day?
This last year.
Oh, maybe she's just sneaking out of the house again. 13. All right, Charlie, thanks for driving us. We appreciate the award. Tell our friends at the Municipal Association, thank you for recognizing us as well. To Natalie and Karen, and especially Jordan, and your team, all the way down to Russ, not down to, because I know that you get called in and at them, and you know, it certainly takes a team to get a trophy like that. It's not just, you know, it's not, it's not us, it's we're out there. So thank you all for making that place special and memorable.
We haven't said it enough yet, but HR, Rebecca Ward, and Kelly and Ace, the difference they have made out there this summer for our staff and just helping, Kelly is out working in low tide most days, so the impact they've had out there and helping towards the area out there, they're another part of the nature team. They're a huge help. Look up to them.
Yep, wonderful, that's a wonderful thing for the city. So I think that one of the interesting conversations we've been having is, you know, we don't like complaints, but every once in a while you get people who, you know, have complaints. It's all I can do to tell people that that entire park, for the exception of maybe four people or run by kids, 150 kids run in that park. And maybe if people knew that it was a kid-run facility, they would be, you know, a little more forgetting, because, you know, there are kids. But that's, I think that's such an amazing thing. It's what we always talk about, why we wanted Chick-fil-A because of the culture and the life skills that they, they engrain into the people that they hire. And I feel like the city of Hartsville is able to do that for 150 of our children and the community beyond our city women's children. We've got people that are coming from Mac Bee and.
Columbia.
Yeah. And that's incredible that we can, that we can offer some of that type of work experience to these people. So.
We had some visitors, was it last week?
It's all.
From Georgetown? Yeah, I start getting worried when other cities show up. It's like, maybe we can just shut the gate and be like, we're closed, you know, nothing to see here. But they're not interested in the water park, they're just interested in tourism, I think. So maybe that's okay.
I plan to think about pool instead of water park.
Or pool.
Might be better named that.
Yeah. North of this splash pad. I like that. I love that. My second favorite city manager. All right, Charlie, thanks again for coming all this way. Always nice to see you. Madam manager.
We just have some introductions. Do you staff brand a new one?
Good afternoon. Just like to introduce Katie Melton. She's our new deputy corporate forester started on July the 1st. She worked at Tenth for quite a while, decided to take on full-time roles. Glad to have her and things went very well. She's doing great.
Do you want to get a picture with the truck, too?
And y'all have her sister.
Yeah.
We're excited to have her, being already a part of the team, but that's just official.
Yeah, glad to have you. Thank you, thanks for coming.
Thank you very much.
Oh, Stephen, I didn't mean to leave you out. You were integral in the water park, too.
Very much so. He was out there helping today.
You're like, that's the only person you can call when nobody's there and knows how everything runs.
Hey. I wouldn't say that. There's a group after. Today I'd like to introduce Marcus Brunson. He started with us, was dealing with the tenth and is now hired full-time. Just wanted to introduce you back to the team.
Marcus was at the water park.
He was at the water park, too.
Marcus put down all the bamboo borders, and it's probably never wants to see bamboo border again in your life. But it looks amazing.
It looks great. Thank you for our help.
Got a couple people today. So we were hurt in C.D.L. driving for a long time, and we recently hired three gentlemen. Kevin Miller.
Oh, yeah, you are.
All right. Tommy Brunson. And Ronnie Rogers. They'll be driving your big trucks around town.
Which trucks?
All of them. Everything's different, too.
What's that have with debris truck?
Oh.
Okay. I might have to get some, come here and get some wet.
Oh, man.
Well, he drives the debris truck.
Now, Matt's politics at its mouth. Oh, you said the debris truck. Oh, yeah, that's, that's not.
That'll make, that'll make him hurt.
Well, welcome to the team, guys.
What did you say?
All right. I would want to be outside right now, be like, man, why'd you drive me up the block? What are you doing? Oh, the debris truck.
No, John, that's.
I don't want you to reach this way. No, it's, I drive a big truck.
Man, you might grab, do it right out of the car.
No, I drive, I drive a big truck.
Oh, my Lord.
I don't have anything.
You're good?
We have the ribbon cutting tomorrow at the hour of practical.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Or that.
At 10 o'clock tomorrow.
Yes, basketball court. Anything we need to know special or you want to tell the media, or?
Yeah, we have the ribbon cutting at the hour of practical court tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock.
And kids.
And any kids that play basketball.
Yeah.
Bring your kids, grandkids, nephew, nephew ever, to kind of play basketball. Bring them to play basketball, mom.
I am playing.
I mean, we're putting a team together, maybe we should like, we should talk.
He's good, he coaches, and he ran for the league, so talk to him.
Said, coach and rip, and said, play.
Oh, I got to know.
Brunch included, Lauren?
Water league. We're not even doing paper.
People put out a garden.
It's nice to see kids out there. I've been, you know, kind of stopping by off and on and dropping the candles off at volleyball, and there are kids that are playing, so it's good stuff.
Friday afternoon.
Yeah. It's a wonderful addition. Now we've got kind of fair and equitable play for kids. You can't have a championship high school basketball team if you don't have somewhere for kids to hone those skills. And speaking of parks, we should have observed a moment of silence for Garrison Murk, who passed away this last week, who was very instrumental. His parents had written Natalie a letter, Jim, I think you're doing the story on it this week, about accessible play for everyone. And, you know, it was back when your wife was on parks and.
Yeah, he was incapable.
Yeah, yeah. And now we've moved Garrison's playground, and it's even bigger and better because of some grants that Mary Catherine and Shannon and whoever else have written. And now, do we have, all of our parks are accessible now?
Yeah.
That's a wonder, I mean, so we went from kind of nothing being accessible to every park.
All the parks with a playground, have any capable playgrounds on them?
So, such a wonderful thing. And all because of his parents, you know, doing that, so certainly keep his family in your prayers. So, if, Lauren, do you have anything else for the manager?
Sorry.
You're good? Okay. So we'll move into the consent agenda, ma'am?
I have one thing.
Yes, please.
I wanted to thank the city manager and the Y for sponsoring the city swim program.
Yes.
We were out of town, and then the next week, had the rest of, then the next week my shoulders out. But I got to go Friday and take some piss Friday, and it's really, really, I love it.
Yeah, that's awesome.
I was afraid I had forgotten how to swim, so.
That's not happening.
And so when I did, when I swam, because I got in the water, I was fine.
And we go to the largest.
Right before swimming, like this?
Yeah, at the water park, too. That's, it's a great thing. All right, items on the consent agenda will be received as information, without objection they stand agreed. Moving into unfinished business, there is not new business. We have resolution 8-19-01, a resolution for approval of transfer of cemetery revenue to Perpetual Care Investment Trust Fund. Is there such a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I have a motion that would pass, resolution 08-19-01.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, that resolution needs to be amended. Amount needs to be changed to 6,000. Here.
I think it's 7,500.
Kept waiting on the mayor for him to chime in, but he's apparently dropped the ball.
We just found that.
He's the amending. What's your official position?
6,600.
Did I figure?
6,170.
170.
What does that tag go to?
It's because the math on it, she'd averaged it for three years, and what the revenue was, it's only one year, went here, compared that spreadsheet. So it went from the 18,000 amount down to 6,000. Before, we were playing catch-up for some years that it wasn't completed, so that's why it's a larger amount in three years in the past, but this year we only have to do the one, that we're calling.
Chair will take a motion to adopt and amend our records. Second, second. Any discussion? Hearing in all favor?
Aye.
So this resolution 8-19-01 is amended, any further amendments? Hearing any further discussion? All in favor, signal positive, say aye. Resolution carries. Item 7 on the agenda is perjury of ordinance 4368, the manager will publish.
To amend chapter 70 solid waste article 1, general section 73, commercial solid waste to user's feet.
Any further reading by title and presentation of ordinance 4368? At this chair, at this time, the chair will entertain a motion to adopt. Mr. Mayor, make a motion, we adopt ordinance 4368?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing in all favor, signal positive, say aye.
Forward. What is the difference with a road car for commercial and residential?
I have to look at that rate difference. I'm not sure. But I would like to explain my disattache while we're doing this. When I completed this, I utilized a previous version of the Masterfee schedule, one that was, that I had worked from before I went on maternity leave. So when I calculated the increases for this schedule, I went too high. So it's actually coming down, the rates that we're doing right now. Brandon had a lot of fun helping correct all these, so there will be a credit on all commercial deals, and the credit will go out next month. We apply credits to all the accounts, but there are parts that the budget was calculated currently, no changes to the budget. That was done currently, but when I went to do the ordinance, I utilized an open file for the fourth and all versions. So our budget is fine, we just need to correct the rates. That's what it is for.
Okay, anything further, ma'am? Okay, all in favor, signal positive, say aye. One dissenting vote, madam. I have a made on the agenda's perjury of ordinance 4369, the manager will publish.
The ordinance to lease the property on the corner of Monroe Avenue and 7th Street to the Hart School Rescue Squad.
Okay, any further reading by title and presentation of ordinance 4369, the chair will entertain a motion to adopt approval of perjury and waive the complete reading under such motion.
Motion to adopt ordinance 4369.
Any discussion? Hearing in all favor, signal positive, say aye. Aye. One dissenting vote, madam. I have a made on the agenda's perjury of ordinance 4370, the manager will publish.
The annex of an approximately 50.13 acres of land, including three parcels under tax number 0560001157, consisting of 12 acres, 0560001158, consisting of 6.28 acres, and 0560001159, consisting of 31.85 acres, located behind the current Walmart property and the city limits of Hartsville. And the developers are here this evening and kind of want to talk about their projects as well.
Okay, any further reading by title and presentation of ordinance 4370, the chair will entertain any motions for approval of perjury and waive the complete reading under such motion.
Motion to adopt ordinance 4370.
Any discussion? Hearing in all favor, signal positive, say aye. Aye. I have not only done this perjury of ordinance 4370, the manager will publish.
The annex of an approximately 50.13 acres of land, including three parcels under tax number 0560001157, consisting of 12 acres, 0560001158, consisting of 6.28 acres, and 0560001159, consisting of 31.85 acres, located behind the current Walmart property and the city limits of Hartsville. And the developers are here this evening and kind of want to talk about their projects as well.
Okay, any further reading by title and presentation of ordinance 4370, the chair will entertain any motions for approval of perjury and waive the complete reading. Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adopt ordinance 4370. Okay, is there a second? Any discussion?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, on the text, the text map number ending in 158.
Yes, ma'am.
That would, and what we got, the rendering that we got, my glasses couldn't even see that. We have a picture here, and it shows that the roadway is actually, goes out to 4th Street. So you can't tell that on what we got in our packets, and we need to be clear on that.
So the road is going to be owned by the developers, it's a private provision. We've kind of had a little bit of discussions back and forth on how to solve that moving forward, but we don't have an answer tonight. But they will own the road, they are paying to maintain the median of the town. There's also, I can find that. They'll split it, they're putting in sidewalks, lighting, a part of.
I have it just here.
Maybe, I've got the subdivision flag here, probably a little larger.
I have it.
You have this one?
I have it, I have it.
All right.
Maybe you go right there.
Okay.
So.
So this parcel here, that's correct, it owns Hartsville crossing 4th Street all the way to right here behind the shop.
Right.
And the current side plan calls for the sidewalk to go all the way down to, which is the back end of the Walmart. And it goes all the way down, it stops right now, that property line. And the reason it stops, I want it to go all the way to the corner, right there with the existing sidewalk curves around for this street going to Hart School Crossing. Right now, I'm trying to figure out who owns it, because when we, when we bought it, I thought that we were eventually going to buy all parts from Hart School. But the folks who were buying it from didn't own that part of it. So we're going to have to go back through the title and really tie down. It's my understanding that the state doesn't think they have a right of way through there. That seems like the most likely scenario to me, but it's just going to take a little more digging. As soon as we clear that up, because right now, I think that the sidewalk that we have shown on our side plan, it's probably about 70 foot short of being able to tie in there. It's kind of like a sidewalk to nowhere, just starts right there. But we want to tie it back in so that there's a continuity in that sidewalk history all the way to our apartment, individual apartment community, that essentially means to Walmart as well.
Can we sneak up?
Yeah. I've got lots of them here.
Is this in the, is this an outdoor?
Here, I'll have to keep walking down the road.
It is.
No, okay. That's on the other side now?
It is.
Thank you, chef.
Well, what do you want to do, actually come back and see where it's on right here? Okay. Because that shop there, that's, we're trying to handle that. It's a home and cargo.
It is good.
Put your fork in the section. This one. Either in the, so, let me get those up there, 57,000. I'll have some printing difficulties, so the side plan is the prettiest thing in the world. And there's other parts that right now, they're, they're just set to remain vacant, they're for sale. And I bet they are. Obviously, it was. That's the partial here. This parcel that's on. Yeah, here. Is like, so Walmart's here, Walmart's here. So they're a little upside down, I told you they had a problem.
There's no access to them. Driver's okay.
The driver, all of them dead out here. So coming off, I call that. That'll just be one big vacant parcel.
For sale. But people walk off.
But the folks we were buying from didn't own that part of it. So we're gonna have to go back through the title and really tie down. It's my understanding that the state doesn't think they have a right of way through there. That seems like the most likely scenario to me, but it's just gonna take a little more to do. As soon as we clear that up, right now, I think that the sidewalk that we have shone on our side plan, it's probably about 70 foot shorter, being able to tie in there. It's kind of like a sidewalk to nowhere, it just stops right there. But we want to tie it back in so that there's continuity from that sidewalk to 5th Street all the way to our apartment, the individual apartment community, that will essentially means to Walmart as well. Yeah, I've got lots of them here.
Is this in the, is this an outdoor?
Here, I'll walk it out to here.
It's not, I don't have a word on here.
No, okay. That's on the other side now?
It is.
Well, what you want to do is actually come back and see where it's on right here. Come back to shop, that's what we're trying to handle.
I was having some printing difficulties, so the side plan is pretty as they can be. And those other parcels, right now, they're just set to remain vacant, they're for sale. And by that, they are. No, that's a partial. This parcel that's on... Yeah, here. So Walmart's here, Walmart's here. So they're a little upside down, I thought they had a problem.
There's no access to them.
The driver will have it there. I'll let him bend it here. So coming off, I call that the... That'll just be one big, basic parcel.
For sale, but he will block it off to you one day.
Yeah, we can come back here, that brings all some difficulty, whether it's just a gate or whatever, just at least keep vehicles from going down.
Are you, are you planning to maintain control of Walmart's property?
We are, he does not wish to, he is going to for now.
Now, I mean, if we're talking about, Natalie and I talked before the meeting, was trying to get together and see what can we do at Hartsville Crossing and work together with the city so that then, well, maybe the city at that point could accept it. Or maintenance agreement or something else, so that, I mean, right now, we're paying somebody to come to it to do the trash out and all the other stuff.
It was never intended to be a private, it was just never completed, and then turned over to the person who makes the progress. So that's what I'm trying to see that every day.
There are other facilities, I'm sure.
Okay, thank you.
Got a little work to do in there.
Well, thanks, you're good. Any, any further questions? All right.
But you got a, is there a timeline for the project?
We're gonna be submitting plans for permitting this week. So hopefully we'd be in construction in, I'd say, 45, 60 days.
And would there be competitive pricing?
Yes, ma'am, just like at Magnolia, to where the rents are affordable to folks who make 60% of area median income.
But not in 50 things.
No, ma'am, it's not, it's not age issue.
He said 60%.
Yes, ma'am.
60% of the, or 60% median income.
Yes, ma'am.
And this is 40 units?
It's 32.
32 units. And as far as the phases go, is that what you were saying, where the phase two of that land will be vacant until you expand down?
Yeah, I mean, we have to go through a whole nother process. I mean, essentially the land's for sale right now and put on itself, and hopefully I can continue building onto it. That's how we, that's how we kind of view it in our head.
So those 32 units are just in that first phase?
That's right, I mean, 12 acres.
Okay, I'm sure. Nothing further? Hearing in all favor, signify the say aye. Vote as by day. Next item on the agenda is executive session, the chair will entertain a motion in executive session pursuant to South Carolina Code 3 with information act action. 30-4-70 paragraph A, sub-paragraph 12 for discussion of appointment of housing authority of Hartsville Board and Negotiations against opposed sale of parcel properties for the purpose of economic development. Any discussion? Hearing in all favor, wait a minute. Yes. Before we go into executive session, I wanted to say it's a pleasure to have Trevor here today. It'll be official downtown call to a one-time trip. That means there's a sale somewhere downtown. You hear Trevor do the "woo." Thank you for coming, it's good to see you. So without a question, all in favor, and votes, stay in the executive session. Thank you all.